Good evening, I'd like to call the order to the St. Charles City Council meeting for Monday, December 16th, 2024. Nancy, please call the roll.
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Here.
Patilla?
Here.
Werbal?
Here.
Besner?
Here.
Weber? Lokitis?
Here.
Foulks?
Here.
Bunker?
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Alderman Lencioni.
Dear Lord, please bless these proceedings, bless the wonderful people of our community, and bring joy and good cheer to all during this holiday season.
Amen. Thank you.
Alderman Lokitis, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, I will, thank you. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Nice to see a room full of people who are here for happy reasons. So, thank you. We have some presentations this evening, and I'm going to start with the first. I'd like to call her up to the podium with me while I give the presentation. This is for Pam Otto, and so she doesn't run away after we take a photo. No, no, come on up! So she doesn't run away after we take a photo. I am going to ask her a question, and it's what are her plans after retirement or during retirement, because it's very fascinating to me. So, I wanted to take a moment to recognize Pam Otto, who is retiring from the St. Charles Park District after 17 years. She began her very successful career at the Park District in September of 2007 as a manager of nature program and interpretive services, and transitioned to her current role as the outreach ambassador in 2019. She currently serves on the Natural Resources Commission for the city, and as a member of that commission, you have helped us advocate for so many sustainable practices for the city as our municipality, so thank you for that. She's an essential part of our community, and she will be dearly missed not only by the Park District but by our city, but we know you're not totally leaving, so you're still here. We have prepared a proclamation which I'd like to read, and you get a copy of that, too. Whereas Pam Otto served the residents of St. Charles for 17 years as an essential member of the St. Charles Park District, and is known for her warm personality, inclusive approach, and positive spirit, and whereas Pam's passion and enthusiasm for natural areas, conservation, and nature education has inspired thousands of people of all ages, and whereas she was a vital part of the Park District's launch of Hickory Mills Discovery Center in 2011, and the addition of the Blandings Turtle Pond, as well as the multiple awards the city received from American Bloom Organization, and whereas Pam shared her knowledge of local natural phenomena and wildlife with thousands of people through her weekly Good Natured article in the Kane County Chronicle and other Shaw media outlets across northern Illinois and Kane County Connects and the Outdoor Illinois Wildlife Journal, and whereas Pam Otto's celebrity status launched her persona "nature nerd" with, sorry, I know that sounds offensive, but it's true, so, WGN-TV Morning News, where she shares her unique and quirky love of nature with viewers in Chicagoland and beyond. I didn't say it, someone told me to say that. Whereas during Pam Otto's tenure, the St. Charles Park District received numerous awards from local and state agencies for its commitment to conservation and nature education. Now therefore, I, Laura Vitek, Mayor of the City of St. Charles, with deepest appreciation to Pam Otto for her dedicated service to the residents of St. Charles and the St. Charles Park District, I am honored to congratulate you on a well-deserved retirement and wish you all the best. And with this, so I've done this, this will be my third time, so you're getting your key to the city. That's like a Price is Right response.
But before you run away, we'll do a photo, we'll do a photo, but before you run away, I do want you to talk about what church you're going to be doing.
As Mayor Vitek said, I am retiring from the Park District. I have no intention of leaving this, my adopted hometown. I've been here over 30 years now, it is home, it will always be home, and I hope that all of you who live here now enjoy it and love it to the extent that I do. It's a gorgeous spot. But I do have this other place that I purchased this summer, it's up in the Upper Peninsula, Michigan. It is a little cabin on a 40-acre flat of mixed hardwood and conifer, and it's a nature nectar, that's important, sugar maples, and hemlock, and fir, and spruce, and there's deer, there's three wolf packs, it's within the Ottawa National Forest, there's a bear den back at the property. I'm actually going to head up there after New Year's to see if I can tunnel my way through the snow, because there's already 30 inches on the ground, and they get about 300 inches a year. So I'll be heading up there for a short time before coming back down here, and then I plan to commute back and forth for months again. It's heaven on earth up in the Upper Peninsula. So, I'm looking forward, but thank you very much, thank you everybody.
Okay, moving on to St. Charles North athletes, and I think I'm going to call Coach Rooney up here, because I think I might do this a little differently, because there are many of you, and I want to do you all justice on your achievements. So, oh, I can use the gas truck here? Okay. So, how should we do this, since she wants to speak? Why don't you say a few words about the team's accomplishments, and I can reiterate that when we do our presentation?
I have the honor today to thank Mayor Vitek and the City Council, as well as the rest of St. Charles, for providing the opportunities we do for our student athletes and for all the children in our community. The girls have had an opportunity to be at a school board meeting and see a levy being proposed, but the girls this year are state champions and state record holders, and I would like to ask Izzy to speak on my behalf the rest of the way.
Hi, I'm Ned DiBo, and I just wanted to say, first off, good evening to the mayor and members of City Council and everyone else in attendance. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. It is truly an honor to stand here and reflect on the incredible journey I've had representing our town over the past four years at the IHSA state competition. When I started swimming for St. Charles North as a freshman, I could only dream of the experiences and accomplishments that would come my way. To now look back and see five state titles attached to my name feels surreal, but I know that those achievements are not just mine, they belong to this entire community and also my team. They are a testament to the energy, dedication, and pride that our town pours into supporting its schools, its athletes, and its programs. Throughout my journey, I've felt the unwavering support of our community, from people in the stands at home meets to various words of encouragement from this town's leaders. That support gave me strength on even the hardest days, and reminded me why I'm proud to call the City of St. Charles home. Next year, I'm excited to continue my swimming career at the University of Georgia. I'll be a one of only four kids from the Midwest on their team, but I couldn't be prouder to carry the spirit and values of St. Charles with me to the collegiate level. My time here has truly shaped me into the athlete, student, and person I am today. Once again, I would like to sincerely thank the mayor and City Council for not only your time, but your support and guidance you've shown me, my teammates, and this town. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Izzy, that was great. You're going to be successful, I'm sure of it. As Izzy said, she's attending University of Georgia, and so what we'd like to do, obviously, celebrate your achievements, I don't know if you said it, but your back-to-back state champion 200 IM, state champion 100 by, state record 400 free relay, and you're attending the university. Amazing accomplishments, congratulations. So now we're going to present you with your street sign. And there's more, four more. Okay, so I think we'll go to Avery Lukey. And, yep. Also a senior, All-American, runner-up 200 free, state champion 500 freestyle, and state record for the 400 free relay. Congratulations. Can you tell us what you'll be doing next year?
So, as you said, I'm a senior at St. Charles North High School, and then next year I'll be attending the University of Tennessee, and I plan to major in aerospace engineering.
Okay, we are on to Tess Savaropoulos, I hope I said that correctly. Come on up. Okay, you are a junior, so you have another year left. You're an All-American, state record 400 free relay, and apparently you're committed already for, not yet, you're thinking, oh, it's a secret. Okay, so I want to congratulate you on your effort, and we have your street sign, too. Is there anything you'd like to say? You don't have to feel pressured. Not really. You're excited for it.
I'm excited for my senior season, I'm sure.
Hi, Avery Lukey?
Yeah.
Yeah. Come on up.
Kate, you're up here, too.
One more, Kate, okay. Kate Farrell, come ba-, oh, sorry to make you sit down. You are a junior, All-American, state record 400 free relay, obviously, and you are committed. So can you talk about that, please?
As Mayor said, I'm a junior, so I still have another season at North next year, and I'm looking forward to that, and then after my senior season, I plan to continue my swimming career at the University of Illinois.
And now we have Maya Townsend, who's a senior, state champion AWD 50 free, 100 free, 200 free, and 100 breast. That's amazing, congratulations.
Maya is a very fortunate young lady, and we have been very fortunate to have her as part of our lives over the last 43 years at St. Charles North. She is our first Athletes with Disabilities student on our girl swim team, and is a 10 times day champion over the last three years.
Congratulations to all of you, and I know we'll see you next year, I'm sure. Okay, now we are moving on, we have one more presentation this evening by Jenna, Jenna Suiki? You are, okay. All of you are, and I will be down there shortly, okay. You're here to present today the Business Alliance Holiday Homecoming Awards from the parade, that's why we have so many people here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Vitek, Council. I'm Susan Stark, I'm with the St. Char-, I'm the events manager at the St. Charles Business Alliance. I'm happy to be here to present the 2024 Electric Christmas Parade winners. First, before we do that, though, I'd like to do a recap of this year's holiday homecoming events. The Lighting of the Lights featured free, there's images of lighting in the lights, featured Free Roads to Nuts, the St. Charles East and North Choirs, Ringing of Santa's Bells, and a grand lighting of the city's holiday lights by Mayor Vitek and Santa Claus himself. Santa opened his house that evening for visits, which will be going every Saturday and Sunday from 1:00 to 4:00 until December 22nd, so just this weekend, so if you need to go see Santa. This was truly a great kickoff for the weekend's event. Saturday's activities included a free holiday movie of The Grinch at the Arcata Theater, free Santa visits with the Bethlehem Brass playing in the plaza, the St. Charles Holiday Shop Crawl, and the magnificent Electric Christmas Parade. Despite the cold, and it was really cold, we had wonderful attendance at all of the weekend events. We had over 1,800 visitors and spectators at the Lighting of the Lights, a full house at the Holiday Movie, over 70-plus parade entries, and over 27,000 parade spectators. We received some feedback from some of the businesses around town. Here's just a few. Ken from Alter, Holiday Homecoming 2024 sales were up 12.5% over Holiday Homecoming 2023, which makes sense, given the construction project at Alter's front door a year ago. I think the better comp is that Holiday Homecoming 2024 sales were up 13.5% over previous weekend, which more accurately shows the lift that the event brings our business. There is always a clear line between alliance-programmed events and increased sales at Alter. Keep them coming, and thanks for all that you do and your team does. Another one from Tech Works, thank you for all you do to coordinate and grow our business community. Tech Works cannot possibly do all the things available to us, but the St. Charles Business Alliance runs events that we are proud to participate and support. Thank you to all your team, and believing in incredible, special city, it is why it is home. The parade could not have happened without the dedication and support of our community volunteers. We had over 90 volunteers on Parade Day, includes the marshals, pacers, banner carriers. We're very thankful to each volunteer for helping to make our event the best they can be, and also huge thanks to our Holiday Homecoming Planning Committee. This event was truly a success. And now, on behalf of the St. Charles Business Alliance, I am pleased to present the 2024 winners with their awards. Once your name is called, please come to the podium and accept your award, and have your photo taken with Mayor Vitek. First, the awards for a nonprofit showcase. In third place, for nonprofit showcase, the Kevin White Foundation. They must not be here to join us. In second place, for the nonprofit showcase, Burberry Gates Farm.
Another one.
And in first place, for the nonprofit showcase, is VW Vote Show Club Chicago. Next is the Children's Showcase winners. In third place for Children's Showcase is Boy Scout Troop 1. In second place is the Elite Academy of Dance, who are not able to join us tonight. And in first place, for the Children's category, there was a tie, Cub Scout Pack 150. And the other, the other first place winner cannot be here, Duet Dance Academy. Up next, the Business Showcase, third place, Valdez Dumpster and Services. Second place, Grubbs 31. And in first place, Epic Escape. And now, the Best in Show, congratulations to Abbott Tree Care Professionals and Larson Christmas Light Show for the winning, the Best in Show. Well deserved, and thank you for being a part of it.
Congratulations.
Last, but definitely last least, we would like to present a special award to the St. Charles Fire Department for being our dedicated community partner. You always do an outstanding job decorating the fire truck and incorporating great holiday music, truly a fan favorite. Congratulations. Once again, congratulations to all the winners. The creativity of your entries are such an important part of the parade's success, and thank you again to St. Charles Chrysler Dodge Jeep and Ram, and to all the sponsors, volunteers, local businesses, and community organizations for your support of this event. Happy holidays, and we'll see you again next year.
Before they get off, not only that, but a big thank you to Susan, Jenna, your team for all you do, because I know every year you make small improvements, large improvements, you keep making it a better and a better event every year, and I know we had good attendance for those participating in the parade. We froze a little bit at Lighting of the Lights, but all in all, it was a great event, so congratulations on that. Okay, so now we are moving on to business, and the Omnibus Boat, Alvin and Besner.
Thank you, Mayor Vitek. I'd like to make a motion to approve the Omnibus Boat.
Second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Werbal, any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Lokitis?
Yes.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bunker? Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any old business. Under new business, we have Item A, Motion to Approve an Ordinance Abating a Portion of the 2024 Property Tax, Tier 24 Levy for the City of St. Charles, and I know City Administrator McGuire has a few words she's going to say.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Every year, Council will recall, we are required to levy the annual debt service for all 13 of the bonds that are referenced in the ordinance, and once we have funds sufficient to pay those, we then abate those revenue sources from the tax levy and pay those out of the various funds that are listed in the ordinance. The general fund, just over about $5.5 million, electric fund, just over $1 million, water fund, just under $1 million, sewer fund, about $700,000, and then our TIF 4 fund is just over $1 million, as well totaling $9,385,587 that will be dropped off our tax levy and paid from those revenue sources.
Thank you.
Move for approval.
Second.
Moved by Werbal, seconded by Lencioni. Any comments or questions? Nancy, please call the roll.
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Lokitis?
Yes.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bunker?
Yes.
Thank you. Item B, a motion to approve a proposal for a B2 liquor license and 2:00 AM late-night liquor application permit for SRIF Doing Business As Rosati Seats located at 550 North Kirk Road, and I know Deputy Chief Majewski will give us a little bit about this item.
Thank you. This appeared earlier this evening at the local liquor commission with a recommendation for approval unanimous. Rosati is located just to the south of Jewell Osco on the east side. The applicant, Amber, and his son, who's the manager, Imran, is here tonight. They are looking to expand their business to offer dining and purchase the unit to the north, address 582, to have their dining in that area. Amber is a former owner of the West Side Rosatis, and currently owns locations in Aurora and Elgin. None of those have any liquor service, so this is the first liquor service for any Rosatis that Amber owns. St. Charles location will be the first officer of liquor, and Amber has never been a liquor license holder before. Nothing in the background indicated any reason for the license to be denied with the applicant, and I can answer any questions, or Imran can answer any questions if you guys need.
Any questions?
Move for approval. Second.
Moved by Lencioni, seconded by Werbal. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Yes.
Patilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Lokitis?
Yes.
Foulks?
Yes.
Bunker?
Yes.
Thank you. Committee report, government operations, Alderman, Foulks.
Yes, we have one item, Mayor. A motion to approve an ordinance amending ordinance number 2024-M-3 with regard to the deferred imposition of a municipal push tax on plays of video gaming terminals.
Second.
Moved by Foulks, seconded by Besner?
I have one comment.
Yes.
Just for the record, I want to state, I'm not going to be voting in favor of this, I want people to know. I understand that this is just-
Thank you, Jamie. Alderman Munn, thank you. Yes, I will not be working that day either. Anyone else have anything? Anything from staff? We do not have an executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Patrilla. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Placidus?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Thank you. Government Services, Alderman Bangard, anything further?
Nothing further.
And Planning and Development, Alderman Lencioni, anything further?
Nothing further.
Do we have any public comments this evening? I do have a couple items, obviously we're kicking into the holidays here. City offices are closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, so everyone can enjoy the Christmas holiday with their families. Offices will also be closed on January first and New Year's Day, so wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday season. A few of us did celebrate the History Museum's annual gala this weekend, some of us dressed in the eighties, some of us didn't, but nonetheless, we all had fun, so thank you to those who attended that. Does anyone on council have anything? Yes?
I would just like to wish Mayor Vittek a happy birthday on Wednesday, December eighteenth.
Thank you, Jamie. Alderman Munn, thank you. Yes, I will not be working that day either. Anyone else have anything? Anything from staff? We do not have an executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Patrilla. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Placidus?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Bangard?
Yes.
Thank you. Government Services, Alderman Bangard, anything further?
Nothing further.
And Planning and Development, Alderman Lencioni, anything further?
Nothing further.
Do we have any public comments this evening? I do have a couple items, obviously we're kicking into the holidays here. City offices are closed on December twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth, so everyone can enjoy the Christmas holiday with their families. Offices will also be closed on January first and New Year's Day, so wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday season. A few of us did celebrate the History Museum's annual gala this weekend, some of us dressed in the eighties, some of us didn't, but nonetheless, we all had fun, so thank you to those who attended that. Does anyone on council have anything? Yes?
I would just like to wish Mayor Vittek a happy birthday on Wednesday, December eighteenth.
Thank you, Jamie. Alderman Munn, thank you. Yes, I will not be working that day either. Anyone else have anything? Anything from staff? We do not have an executive session, so I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Besner, seconded by Patrilla. Nancy, can you please call the roll?
Munn?
Yes.
Lencioni?
Yes.
Gamm?
Yes.
Patrilla?
Yes.
Werbal?
Yes.
Besner?
Yes.
Placidus?
Yes.
Folks?
Yes.
Bangard?